On that note, I'll go ahead and call this February 4th, 2019, meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order. We'll start with our pledge of allegiance, and I'll go ahead and ask Chief Dowd to lead us tonight.
......................................................... Thank you, Chief. We'll go on to communications from the public. Is there any public communication tonight? Not seeing any. We'll stay with the audience. Any volunteer board reports? Not seeing any. How about the council? Richard?
Yes. Bike pad met this morning, and we have received $20,000 for tourism grant for their wayfinding signs on the Whitefish Trail. And we're working on some, a map of the easement requests with the tracking numbers for BNSF so they can see exactly what it is, because as they change personnel, everybody loses track of what easements we're looking for at Burlington Northern Santa Fe. So, and apparently, we're in two different jurisdictions for BNSF, and Baker Avenue is the dividing line. So, it's two different track sections. Is that right, Craig? So, it gets complicated when we're dealing with other folks. HDR is to complete the environmental assessment this week on the Riverbend condo easement, and then it goes to Fish Wildlife and Parks and a public notice. Continue to work on the Les Schwab easements. The survey is complete. The important other things, we're looking at some right-of-way along Vormans as a way to cross over to school and get kids from that development that has now broken ground. What's the name of that one, Craig? I keep forgetting.
Trail View.
Trail View. As I recall, it was 52 or 54 housing units, individual housing units, and how to move people across. That's it. Front bike pad.
Question. On the Riverbend condo section of the trail, are they still, are you still contemplating, is it going to be a helical pier type system, or are they figuring out an actual easement?
They're actually...
It'll avoid that option.
I think we're going to avoid that helical pier option, but it will go right in front, between the river and the condos.
There's enough room.
Well, and parts of the year will be underwater.
Yep, figured. Thanks, Richard. Any further volunteer board reports? I'll just update everyone real briefly if you hadn't heard, and Maria certainly chime in if I miss anything. We did receive a favorable decision notice from the DNRC regarding the close of the Loop project in partnership with Whitefish Legacy Partners. It was favorable for the Smith Lake Conservation portion. Obviously, the close of the Loop, which includes the bridge infrastructure across Lazy Creek and Swift Creek down the road if it were to come to fruition, and associated with that were some mitigations and BMPs that were tagged to the decision notice, which would include seasonal trail closures, if I'm not mistaken, as well as dog restrictions on the section of trail from essentially the Swift Creek trailhead west to north Beaver, at least Lazy Creek. Is that about right, Maria?
That's correct.
So, again, favorable decision notice took a little bit longer than we all expected, but nonetheless, good to see a decision from the DNRC once again. Other reports? Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Any changes or additions to the January 22nd meeting minutes, or can I have a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Henin. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously, Michelle. We have zero public hearings scheduled this evening, so we'll move on to item seven, which is communications from the city manager. You do have Adam's written report enclosed with the packet. Any questions or comments to Adam on his staff report? Adam, anything additional to report?
Nothing else for me, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Brings us quickly on to item number eight, which is communications from myself and the city council. We did receive a letter from Mary Flowers regarding compliance with state law requiring notices, minutes, and access to all city subcommittee and work group or other such meetings. Any comments on that correspondence? Richard?
Yeah, I would just like to further acknowledge Mary's letter, and to me, what it says is that we need to continue to be vigilant and responsible in our addressing the transparency and public involvement, but I think we're doing a good job. And, but with that regard, I do think it's a reminder that for all of our committees and those parts of city business that we maintain that public comment and transparency.
Absolutely, and I just want to remind the public that, you know, state law does not require our city to hold public hearings at both the planning board and the city council levels. We do that as out of a courtesy for the public and to garner as much public input into our decision-making process that we can. So, I think we go above and beyond the call of duty in that respect. I personally certainly appreciated Angie weighing in, our city attorney, in responding to Mary's points. I feel rest assured that we're in solid, on solid footing from a legal standpoint with all of our public outreach, communications, information requests, noticing, et cetera. So, I wanted to thank Angie. You have full faith and confidence for myself and this council, and that will not change. With that said, we'll start with counselor comments, and how about Richard tonight?
Sure. What I would like to do, if I may, is for the viewing public, talk about our At-a-GLance, which is our way to illustrate the Climate Action Plan.
Great.
I feel a little bit, not silly, but it's kind of interesting to have kind of, not so many people in the audience tonight, but this is a illustration of a brochure that was provided and developed and presented by Wheelie Creative to give this glance or a quick overview of what's in the city's Climate Action Plan. And it gives us this roadmap of where we are and where we're going in order to reduce our impacts on the environment consistent with previous resolutions that this council has approved. So, this is the, this is what it looks like. There are brochures that are available as well, and I have a brochure for each one of you, which I'll be happy to give you at the conclusion of the meeting. So, thanks. One other thing. I had the honor of representing the city in the presentation of the various art awards in conjunction with the art project with, in conjunction with the celebrations of the previous weekend, the winter carnival, and climate action, for the Climate Action Plan from the city, and Climate Smart Glacier Country.
Great. Thanks, Richard. Ryan?
No comment.
Frank?
Just as a personal observation, I've had the opportunity over the past several weeks and month or so to become a regular user of the dog park, and I can tell you that, at least from my experience, the, not only is it well-used and well-attended, I would go so far as to say it is probably, other than Smith Fields, it is probably the most-used and utilized park facility that we have, and I am impressed beyond all means at the care that the board of the dog park takes with that facility. It's not immaculate, but it's darn clean, and everybody participates, and so I've just, I've enjoyed it immensely, even on a freezing afternoon like today. There were people in attendance. It was just, it's just been, it's a wonderful facility that we have, and I'm just, I can't say on a, I've known this for a long time, but having experienced it, it's, it's pretty amazing.
Thanks, Frank. Melissa?
No comment.
Thank you. I've just got a couple things. During our work session this evening, it kind of reminded me of our Tourism Sustainability Master Plan process, and I'm just curious where we are with that. I haven't heard much about that recently. Can someone update me, please, from staff?
There is a request for proposals that is about to go out to hire a consultant to assist the Sustainable Tourism Master Plan Committee as we move forward. We've had, I believe, one public workshop, and we're planning another one, I believe, later this spring. We have been on kind of a sabbatical, I would say. I think our last meeting was September-ish? October? So, I think that once this RFP's out, we'll, we'll get rolling again.
Okay. And I'll stay with you, Craig. I know I've asked this before. Thanks for that update, by the way. The garbage receptacles in downtown, I noticed this weekend, there's several of the green, you know, standard streetscape cans that basically the doors don't shut or fasten anymore, and those doors just kind of remain open and swinging. Is there something we can do about that?
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be working on those this spring to try and get those back into working order.
Okay. I don't mean to kill that to death, but it'd be nice to see those fixed. I'd like to give a shout-out to our law enforcement and our emergency services for what seemed to be a well-orchestrated winter carnival parade and all the associated activities. I think it went pretty flawlessly, and a big thanks to Bill and Joe and your crews up at the Emergency Services Center. Next, I know the answer to this, but I thought it would be helpful for the council. Adam, if you wouldn't mind just giving us a brief update on where we are with the snowlot development?
Yeah.
Please?
Yeah, absolutely. So, there's two things we're waiting on with the snowlot. One is a financial analysis, and the other is the environmental. So, on the financial analysis, there's a couple of things that we're trying to work through. So, you guys have all seen the design concept that has come forward, but the massing and scale of those buildings and the number of square footage that I've been told from the architects that put that together, they don't necessarily match up with the number of units that we're supposed to have. We could probably put 45 units there. But based on what we're coming up with through our affordable housing program, are certain square footages of two bedrooms and one bedrooms, and so to get in that line, we need to reduce the number of square footage probably by at least 20%. So, until we can actually see some of those reductions, and we may even be able to squeeze out a couple of other units, if you remember back to the concept plan, it calls for 34 units, but we could possibly get to 36. The big worry there is is whether or not parking is going to be, is going to be a problem. So, once we get down the, the massing and scale down to the amount of square footage that we think we, we need, we can use that square footage to extrapolate out construction costs and things like that. So, once we get that done, we'll be able to run the financial numbers. We also have the environmental side of things. It was held up a little bit with the government shutdown. Craig and I found out some new information today on it that we were not privy to before, but it sounds like the EPA worked with a company that they're comfortable working with in the state of Montana, and I think even just in their, in their region. The EPA region is out of Denver, and this company hired a contractor to come in and drill some test holes and everything else. They appealed to the Montana DEQ so that they could test a particular area that was within the BNSF Plume area, and they said they can't do it. I can't remember all the reasons for why they couldn't do it, but the driller came in, drilled all the other test holes, and we still missed this one corner. Come to find out today that there was a letter that went out from DEQ to the EPA and others, basically stating that you do not have a licensed well-driller that came and did that. It was certified, okayed by the EPA, but not with the DEQ. So, now, we've got to work with the EPA. I sent him an email just today to try to figure out what we need to do and who we need to get so that we can drill, I think it's just one, maybe two holes in that corner, so that we can get that done and get this behind us. So, I think both the environmental and the financial piece, I think we're moving along, you know, as best we can, but it's probably going to be another couple of months before we get to the bottom of that.
Okay. Thanks for the update. Any questions for Adam on the snowlot? Not seeing any. I know it seems like we just had our annual retreat, but I kind of wanted to get ahead of the curve this year, since we were pretty late last year in meeting as a council, and just throw out the idea of perhaps trying to schedule something on an off-week, meaning a non-council week in March, and equally important to see if that would work for you as well, Adam. How does your month of March look? Take a couple minutes to look at your calendars. So, our meetings are scheduled for the 4th and 18th of March, if I'm not mistaken. So, it'd be hopefully the weeks of the 11th or the 25th.
Sean, I could do something the 11th, the week of the, the 25th I'll be gone.
The week of the 25th you'll be gone?
Yes.
The week of the 11th, I'm gone. And it's, I mean, if we need to slop over into April, I think that's fine. I think the week of March 4th is going to be upon us before we even know it. It's, so, if the 11th doesn't work for myself, the week of the 18th is a council week. We could schedule something if you guys didn't mind double-dipping that week.
Fine.
I could do that.
You could do that, okay. Adam, how does that look with your schedule?
I could probably make that work. That week of the 18th, I've got tons of stuff, but I can probably rearrange and do something if we could make that work.
Okay.
And I think from staff standpoint, we're hoping to have the retreat done by like mid-April, just in case there's some budgetary implications. We'd love to get that put into the budget before they go out.
May 1st.
May 1st.
When do you anticipate the council and staff developing annual goals?
Well, at that retreat.
At the, so, in...
Correct.
Following that retreat, then we'll have a work session on council and staff goals?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. You think we're pushing it, scheduling it too quickly, or do you want to push it into April, or does that week work for you guys?
Early is better for me. I'm flexible. Week of the 18th, I could do that.
Okay. Richard?
I think it's a little, I think it's a little ambitious to move it that early, but just...
For what reason? Just...
Just because, you know...
It's right around the corner?
It's just right around the corner, but I can do it. Sure.
Six weeks out.
Yeah.
You okay with it, though?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll check in with Andy and...
I'll double-check my calendar when I get home.
And Katie as well, and maybe we could shoot for, I think last year we did a Thursday-Friday. Seemed to work pretty well for everyone. Does that work for you, Ryan?
Yep.
I know your schedule's pretty tough as well, so, so maybe the 21st...
And that would actually really work for me, too.
Okay. It's the 21st.
Evening, and then Friday during the day.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yep. Thanks. Do you want to set up a doodle poll just to...
Yep, just to verify with everybody. I'll do so.
That'd be great. Thank you, Adam, and council. I think the last thing on the list was we did have a work session earlier for the public's benefit on our recreational program, fee schedule, which came as a recommendation from the Park Board of Commissioners. We, I asked Maria to please post the questions or the direction that she needs up on the screen. Maria, if you don't mind, do you mind bouncing through the first three questions, and just, we'll make sure that we're all on the same page before providing you some guidance on items four and five?
Sure. So, the first question is which fee schedule is preferred? Three were presented. One is a hybrid of the first and the second, and that is the fee schedule that was recommended unanimously by the Park Board. The direction that I think that I heard was that the Park Board approved fee schedule was the direction we should continue with, but I would like clarification on that.
I think that's correct.
Okay. The second item is how to define a resident versus a non-resident, and from the discussion, it sounds like resident is defined as anyone who lives within or attends the Whitefish School District.
I think you want, I think we want it to be not simply lives within for summer periods of time. I think it needs to be a official resident of the Whitefish School District or an attendee of the Whitefish School District.
Primary residence.
Primary, yeah.
Primary residence.
Yeah.
Primary residence. Is that...
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
Is that clear, Maria?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. The next item is should we end the reimbursements for cancellations, and what I heard from that is yes, we should end the reimbursements. However, if there are extenuating circumstances, we need to come up with some language that identifies the extenuating circumstances, at which point we could offer a 50% reimbursement.
Is everyone comfortable with that?
I think that there was also some discussion that even with an extenuating circumstance up to a certain time, i.e. two weeks before the camp begins, that a reimbursement would not be appropriate, just because we've already expended all the money for supplies and staff. Is that the way you all remembered that discussion?
I don't, I don't recall the two-week threshold.
Well, I just threw the two-week threshold out there, but at some point, it doesn't seem reasonable that we would give a reimbursement if we've already expended monies to run the camp.
Right, and I think Dana made a good point during the work session. I'll let her respond to that, Richard, in terms of what that cutoff date should be.
You know, Richard, it's, it's hard to say on the timing for the department of when they hire. You know, I think you could maybe say depending on when early registration occurs, you know, two weeks before the program starts for the summer, but I would leave that up to Maria, maybe, to determine. I do think that most programs that you would find like this do not provide for a refund for canceling. I think we could find language, though, that allows for some type of extenuating circumstance, illness, physical injury to where a kid could not attend summer camp, and I think we could find some language, and Angie could help, and maybe where it goes all the way up to Adam at that point for his determined determination for a cancellation reimbursement.
Okay.
Everyone comfortable with that?
Yep.
Okay.
So, to clarify, there's not really a timeframe. It's more based on the extenuating circumstance.
Correct. Good idea. And I think there were two items that we did not discuss, the first being should there be a summer camp non-resident rate, and then the second being should after-school and rec programs cover more administrative costs. Maria, do you mind just touching on that first one?
Sure. Sure. So, the, should there be a summer camp non-resident rate? Currently, we only have the membership rate. It would be applicable to a resident or a non-resident, and the theory behind that was that it's likely that if you're investing in the membership, you're probably a resident. It's not likely that a non-resident would purchase the membership. There probably are circumstances where that could take place. And just to give an example, if you're an individual who has a summer home here and you want your child to go to the summer camp every day, that may be the example of an individual who would then need a non-resident membership rate. So, I'm just asking for direction on if you would like us to develop that rate as well.
What's your recommendation?
I think that we could develop that rate fairly easily, and it would not be difficult for us to then identify if that person is a resident or non-resident for our summer camp. It only applies to summer camp, so...
Okay.
I think there are situations where we are going to have non-residents in that, in that sense, who will want a membership.
Okay. Council?
I will concur.
Can I, just a quick question. If, say, a child was living here, staying with a grandparent, would that be, maybe considered, they'd be eligible?
That would be an example.
They would be non-resident?
They would be non-resident because the child does not attend the, the school district.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Or live within.
Okay.
Consensus on that? Take Maria's suggestion? Okay. Then finally, should after-school and rec programs cover more administrative costs? I believe Maria indicated that about 10% of your time and about, or 10% of Liz's time...
Correct.
And 35% of Sean's time...
Of Steve's.
Steve's, excuse me, is allocated to administrative overhead. Thoughts there?
I guess I'd be willing to continue to effectively subsidize those programs with that amount of administrative overhead not allocated to it. I'm, I'm fine with that in terms of, got a comfort level, and certainly given the fee schedule that we've determined and where we are with it, I think that's probably the best thing.
So, that's a status quo?
Correct.
Yeah.
Is everyone comfortable with that? Okay, I'm seeing four head nods, so...
Thank you.
Sure. Thanks again for the work session. It's helpful. Lastly, I haven't had time to review, it was just an interesting concept that Leo Keane brought up at our last meeting regarding this payment in lieu for tree preservation proposal. Has anyone had the opportunity to look at that in a little bit more detail or give it any thought? Richard?
I have, and I think that the concept is worth further exploration, and whether or not it's a fee in lieu, or, because two weeks ago, as Frank brought up, if we lose a mature tree, to replace it with a two-inch caliper, it's two different costs. So, the mature tree has a value, and if we lose the value of a mature tree, understanding that trees don't live forever, but if we lose that value, and I think arborists clearly have established the values of trees, mature trees, and we can come up with some sort of a fee schedule or a cash-in lieu, if you're going to take big trees out, then there should be some cost. And I, I think it's worth taking a look, I was just looking at it again today, and I think that it's worth pursuing.
Was he intending this to possibly apply to commercial developments as well as major subdivisions only? Is that your understanding?
I think it was both.
Not, it was both, okay.
Yeah, that was my understanding.
Okay. But this would not be a residential tree program?
Not in your own backyard, no, not individual. That's, that's my understanding, but if a developer, either in a housing development or a commercial development, removes trees that they have to pay a cash-in lieu. Is that something we can continue to work on? I would like to see us work on that somehow. We do cash-in lieu sidewalks.
Angie?
So, Richard, actually, we have a part of our code that talks about a tree preservation plan, and Wendy and I, and I think we've kept Maria a little bit in the loop, have been talking a little bit about revising that to better protect bigger trees, and because our current condescendence to place more value on new trees, planting new trees and preserving older trees. So, I think it is something that we can look at.
Yeah, I'd look, I'd love to see the options, and maybe a revision of what we already have, or maybe a, a cash-in lieu, or some, some sort of a thing, but I, I do think that we, we stand to lose a lot of nice trees if we're not careful.
Sure. I appreciate Angie's comment. I would much rather see our existing code amended or updated to reflect these ideas than adding another layer of regulation to the books, so to speak. So, if perhaps staff could look into that and bring back some suggestions, I think we'd appreciate that. Great, thanks, Angie. Lastly, Dick Zolner has approached me a few times now, Craig, about the stormwater conveyance at the corner of Monigan, you know, just north of the wastewater treatment plant associated with the Affordable Housing Project. He mentioned, and I drove out there and looked at it on my way to the gym, but he, there's a bunch of fill material staged. There's a silt fence, you know, up, you know, separating the fill from the ephemeral drainage, and his question was whether or not that storm conveyance has protections under our water quality ordinance. I indicated it does. It's a 10-foot setback from top of bank, correct?
Yeah, correct. I, I think that we had that conversation with Dick a week or two ago. He had brought in...
He brought me this.
That, that's what he brought us, which was kind of a memo that was produced at the time of the Critical Areas Ordinance drafting. I'll circle back with him, but I, I thought that we had answered his question. There is, there is a 10-foot setback, and it's my understanding that silt fence is at least 10 feet from, from the top of bank.
It appeared to be as well, to me.
Yeah. There, earlier on in the, the project, there were some issues with that silt fence, and they've made some improvements.
Right.
He might not be aware of that, but we'll, I can talk to him again.
You know, I'll get, I'm going to plan on giving him a call anyway. I can update him and... You know, I'm going to plan on giving him a call anyway, I can update him and take that off your plate. His second question was related to whether that fill is going to be placed in that drainage along with a proper hydraulic structure. Are you aware of any plan to actually fill and...
There will be a culvert placed in a small portion of that drainage to create the bike path, but other than that, that drainage should remain as it is naturally in open soil.
Okay. I'll relay that back to him.
Yeah, and that, I believe that pile of soil is all topsoil that they stripped, which they do plan to replace after they put the structures up.
Okay. Great. Well, I think that's all I had. Anything further from the council? Maria, do you have everything you need from us regarding the work session? You bet. Anything further from staff? We are adjourned. Thanks.